Hello, everybody, and welcome to Flagler Weekly, episode forty. We're finally here. Yeah, man, it's amazing, dude. I'm really, I'm really proud of us, actually. We've been through a lot, but today we have a really special guest. And I'm really excited because I appreciate you coming and checking out our podcast. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't know if I wanna use the words that it gives us validation, but I feel like, you know, you are definitely an important person in the community, and I appreciate you showing us love and coming here and answering any questions that we have.
Well, y'all are important, too. You guys have been, uh, you know, there's a lot of folks that talk about you in the community.
I appreciate that.
One, I think one of your best episodes was the ones you did for the auditorium. The new fits? And where you got the tour of it and all, a lot of people talked about that.
I appreciate that. Yeah, because the main goal, which I feel like you're in a similar boat where you just wanna help out the community and kinda shine light on different places. So I feel like we're trying to take Flagler County into like the twenty-first century online interviews and stuff like that. And that's nothing against printed material or anything like that, but sometimes I like to sit with people in long-form content and really get to know them, you know, and ask the questions that I feel like the people wanna know.
Yeah.
Well, um, today, people, we have Eric Cooley. Thank you so much for coming to join us.
Thanks for inviting me.
And Eric Cooley, you're so welcome. You are, we were just talking about it, you are the city commissioner of Flagler Beach. And you're also on the board of
City Commission.
Okay, and you're also a business owner. You own the Seven-Eleven.
Correct.
And you know, it's funny because I feel like that's how a lot of people know you. And it's almost like, I don't wanna say like Batman-esque, but it's like, I don't know if people know you're like the city commissioner as well. It's almost like when they're like, let me ask for the manager. You're like, I am the manager.
No, like, it's funny, too, like, a while ago, like, when I first, like, lived in Flagler, went to the Seven-Eleven, like, every day I would see him, like, stocking shelves and stuff, and I thought he was just, like, a dude that worked there. And then I liked seeing you in the office, and then like, you know, when the whole Maria thing happened with the, the place, um, then I, I found out that you were actually the owner, too.
Awesome.
So, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people think that just because of the, the jobs I do there and then the tasks I, I choose, they think I'm the beer stock guy. And a lot of them, they don't even know that I own the place and, and let alone any of the other jobs and, but it's catching on. I'm, I'm gonna be going into my third term and so folks are quickly learning.
And this is every two years term or is it a four-year, three years? Okay.
Been doing it six years now.
Awesome. So, guys, in the beginning, I, we have some sponsors that I would like to shout out, and I really appreciate our supporters. Everybody who watches this, please share this. Um, if we can, I'd like to shout out Billy Dzeus. If you're looking to find your dream home in Flagler County, you need to meet with Billy Dzeus, your local real estate expert. Whether you're buying or selling, trust Billy Dzeus for a reliable expert service in Flagler County. Contact him today.
That was good. You did a good job with that.
I appreciate it. I got, I got one more that I'm gonna do. And this is, uh, Terrence Roberson. I really appreciate these guys. This one's a little bit longer, so please bear with me.
You know, Billy Dzeus is kind of a cool name, though.
It really is. It is. He, um, he's Haitian. Shout out to my Haitians friends and family. I'm not Haitian, but anyways. Uh, okay. Consistency has been my motto with anything that I do. I truly believe that if you are consistent with anything, the results you want will come. Same thing goes with repairing your credit. It's more than just sending in a dispute letter. That's true. We have to be consistent in maintaining an excellent score once we get there. If you're tired of getting rejected for a loan, car, house, et cetera, you want, or if you are tired of high interest rates, having to pay an arm and a leg for something, then look no further. Our company will help you get the credit score you need to leave high rates and rejections behind. If you'd like a free consultation on how we can help, please reach out to us at eight-three-three-three-two-six-six-seven-four-seven or email at terrence@consistentconsultingllc.com. You know, I definitely need to hit him up, cuz I need to work on my credit a little bit.
I did credit repair like four or five years ago. It works. It works, yeah.
Awesome.
I went up like a hundred fifty points.
That's dope. Well, you know, if you guys are interested in those services, then there are links in the description here, and you guys can go and check that out. So, Mr. Cooley, we really appreciate you coming to check us out. And, um, we were talking about different topics. I'm not gonna start with that topic, but, um, what I would like to start with is we, you know, did a little bit of research on you. We found out that you are from up north a little bit, I believe Pennsylvania. That's where you're born?
I grew up in, uh, northeast Philly.
Okay, northeast Philly. Are you an Eagles fan?
Yeah, mostly. Yeah, Eagles fans are never real true Eagles fans cuz we hate on our team just as much as we love them. I mean, we're the fans that hate our own team with snowballs.
Wow.
But I've been to a lot of Eagles games back at the old vet. Um, I've been down here for quite a while, and I moved all over the country, but I, I grew up in Philly, so I would consider that probably my home, but moved it. I've lived in a lot of places.
Yeah. What do you think, well, let's say besides for Flagler County, what do you think is your favorite place that you've lived?
Favorite place I live hands down would have to be Memphis, Tennessee.
Whoa, really?
That
They say it's pretty dangerous.
That's, it is dangerous if you get like in certain areas, but, um, actually, surprisingly, most of those areas are down by Graceland, Elvis's place. But downtown Memphis is where I lived, and it was amazing, and that is a, a great city. And there's always something cool going on, and you got the blues, you got barbecue. Yep. You know about Beale Street.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely heard some stories out there. You know, I've been there once. Um, is, is that where, uh, I think Martin Luther King was, died in Memphis?
Lorraine Hotel. And, uh, that was actually about two or three blocks from my house.
Whoa. Impactful.
And it's interesting because I don't know if you've ever been to Lorraine Hotel, which is now the National Civil Rights Museum, but they preserved the entire scene where he got assassinated. And it's all, all the original cars that were there are still there.
Wow.
The hotel room in the whole area, the whole wing of that building is exactly as it was that day, and then they have a permanent wreath installed. And, uh, so it's, it's almost like a time capsule as well. As is the building across the, the way where the shooter was. And that building got preserved as well.
Whoa. You know, and I'm not gonna get off subject or anything like that, but it's kinda crazy how we do do that, kinda like the cross with Jesus Christ, you know, and some people are like, would he wanna see that if he came back? You know what I mean? It's like, it's like, bro, you know, like, I feel like MLK, he's like, bro, I don't ever wanna see that hotel room again. You know what I mean? Like, burn it down, like, destroy it. Build something else there.
Well, it's, it is important, though, because we have to, you, you have to see the ugly side.
Definitely.
People have to see it to understand because if you never see it, you can never draw the connection. And pe- and people don't really understand what really happened. You know, for instance, the younger generation that, that never had to live through that, you know, when they go there and they see how it all played out, and they see the pictures, and they can actually stand in those spots.
You can kinda feel the energy.
Yeah, it's impactful.
Definitely.
And versus just looking at a picture online or in a schoolbook or something like that, if you don't see it, you're never gonna get it.
I can understand that. I can agree with that.
Yeah, same thing, you know, with, um, with Germany and, and all the memorials that were over there, you know, with, with the Nazis and everything. When folks talk about it in, in all the really horrible things that happened, you know, it's impactful, but it's not as much as if you go there and you see what happened.
Not as real.
And you see the, the actual claw marks on the wall, and you see just how many people were killed at these places. And you see the, the chambers where folks were burned alive and all that stuff. That, that'll change you.
That's true. That's very true. Um, so Memphis, Tennessee, you said is your favorite. What brought you down to Flagler Beach?
So I was working for a Fortune Three Hundred company.
Okay.
And it was actually in Memphis, and, but I've been moving all around the, the country, and, you know, there, there comes a point in your career where you just kinda have an epiphany and you say, I think it might be time to just switch things up. Um, you know, I, I climbed basically what I consider to be the top of the mountain, and I wanted to just pivot. And so what do people think? What's the stereotypical thing you think of? I wanna get some business on the beach, and it's usually either a bar or sell ice cream or something like that. But I wanted something that wasn't as volatile economically, and it was, you know, more consistent. So I said, well, convenience stores, they stay pretty consistent. And so I just, uh, looked all around the country at different, you know, opportunities. I looked at everything. I looked at it, all kinds of franchises, everything from bug control franchises to full-blown restaurants and, and settled on, I wanna live at the beach and have a store right on the sand, and, and then I bought that place. And it just kinda ended up working. It happened to be for sale at the, the time I was looking.
Awesome.
And went right in.
So that's what brought you to the Flagler Beach area?
Correct.
Awesome. So what year was that in?
That was a decade ago.
Okay.
Fourteen.
And did you, like, buy a house at that time in this area?
Yeah. Well, I rented for a little while while I was looking for a house, and then working on getting relocated down, so I rented for about a year. And then bought a fixer-upper house.
Awesome.
Yep, and, uh, did all that, and, and I've owned the store since fourteen, and I've been in the same house fixing it the whole time, since pretty much fifteen or sixteen.
That, that's my dream, and it, it's funny that you say you're still doing it. I could imagine that being something that I'm doing. Um, so that, I'm, I'm guessing just from real estate-wise, you're, you're doing pretty well, and I see the store, the Seven-Eleven, is doing pretty well as well.
It's doing good. We're having, you know, it's a tough year this year. Um, just a lot of, it's mostly weather. So we live and die by mother nature. And, um, it's a tough year. It's a slow year for everybody. Plus, you have, there's some macroeconomics going on. Things are a little bit slower, tourism's down. But overall, that, you know, the store stays busy, and, and we're doing pretty well.
Okay.
It's nice, it's nice fun. It's like right in the
Right in the heart.
Right in the heart, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right there. I noticed that, too. Like, it's a good spot for you to, like, talk to everybody, too. Like, whenever I'm, the few times I've been in the store to see you, it's like, people stopping by, stopping by. It's like, you're like a hands-on guy.
Yeah, a lot of people, uh, a lot of the engaged folks, they kinda call, you know, my store kinda like the Flagler Beach United Nations. We just, everybody comes in, they're talking what's happening in the city, whether it be politics, projects, you know, any concerns, um, and just the nature of the business, too. And you see these people day in and day out. We do, in, in our busy season, we'll do over fifteen hundred transactions a day. So I see a lot of people. And eventually, that opens up conversations of their concerns about the city, things like that, and that's how that ended up transitioning into getting into politics, cuz I'm not a politician.
You really see the people on an everyday basis, like, the, everybody on all walks of life, young, old.
Everybody.
Everybody comes in the Seven-Eleven.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, too. It's like, you're, you're on the ground. Like, so you can, like, go directly to the store and say anything to you, and, and you have your ear to the ground constantly. So that's good.
Anything good or bad I hear about.
Yeah.
There's something they don't like, I hear about it. If it's good, I, I'll sometimes hear about it. Usually, uh, bad news spreads quicker than good news.
Yeah.
So was there a specific moment where it's like, you know what? I'm running for office?
So when I first moved here, you know, since I'm a business owner, just naturally, you start getting into philanthropy initiatives. So we started doing the Thanksgiving meals and getting involved in Flagler Strong, doing beach cleanups. And when you're doing all these type of projects and talking to people with the business, folks start going, you know, hey, you're involved with a lot of stuff, and you kinda have your ear to the ground, and a lot of people know you. Maybe you should think about getting involved in the city. Of course, you know, your initial reaction is, no. I don't know, I don't know anything about politics. I don't know how to be a politician. I don't even know how any of that works.
That's where I'm at right now.
Right. And so as time progressed, the, the volume of the folks that were talking about that became pretty high. And it's like, okay, well, I hear you, and I'll kinda look into that. And I had the support from the previous mayor, and she's like, you're getting in. We need your help. You're involved, and, you know, we want you on the, the board and everything. And so I ran, and, um, fortunately, I was unopposed. Nobody had any problems with me running, so nobody ran against me. And it was, it was good. So, and then, um, just been a learning experience since.
Okay. I believe this time, I think I've seen that somebody is running against you?
Hmm.
Okay.
I got one person running against me. And then the other seat that was up, uh, was the mayor's seat, and the mayor did not run, and then one person ran. And so she got it by default. So she ran unopposed.
So, well, I guess that person would have, I was gonna say, like, so at that time, pretty much anybody could have ran and won?
Anybody can run. As long as you have lived here for a year, you can run. You have to be an actual, you know, resident on paper for a year before you're eligible.
Hmm. So I was talking to Dave about that, or about this. Something that I'm interested in is like, um, and I have this in my notes, is what does like a day of yours look like? Cuz you're a very busy man.
Right.
So like, if you could break down, like, what time do you wake up in the morning? Do you start off at the Seven-Eleven? What, what's going on there?
Typical day of mine, oh, jeez.
Kinda like Elon Musk. Or do you separate it day by day? Like, some days you do this, some days you do that?
I do have different tasks for different days, but I do kinda have a regimen. Before I even get out of bed, I'm checking emails, and then I'll transition from emails, social media, see, see what all the latest is that's going on. Um, being in politics, I have to keep my ear on the news, and I also have to keep my ear on a lot of the local chat rooms. You know, what's, what's happening? Did something break? Is there something people are mad about? Cuz that, that all moves really quick. So after I get that done, then it's just off to work, and, uh, I'll take care of all my administrative functions in the morning. And after about ten, that's when everybody knows that I'm done with all the administrative stuff, and then, you know, I just do regular business, and then folks usually end up coming to see me every day about business and with the city. And, uh, so I, I talk to everybody all day long about city stuff, and then, um, in the evening, it's usually meetings of all kinds of different sorts, cuz what a lot of folks don't understand is commissioners have subgroups, basically, that they sit on. So I sit on the finance committee. I sit on the tourist development council, and there's, there used to be an economic development task force. And so each of us have split up the workload in, in sitting in all these different subcommittees. And, uh, so there's a lot of meetings in, in the evening, and then meeting with, uh, the city manager as well. I think you might have come by one day when I was meeting with him. And, and then meeting with citizens. So there's a lot of meetings, evenings, and then then it's just get home, figure out some kind of meal, and then hang out with the dogs.
Awesome. Awesome. I think you had some, Dave.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, I was gonna say, like, the, the subcommittees, like, in, you know, in Congress and stuff like that, there's like the defense subcommittee, financial subcommittee.
Right, same thing.
So, yeah, okay.
You know, you have your main position. I'm a city commissioner. But then there, you have to be a city liaison for all these other groups.
And this is every day? You, these meetings, pretty much?
You know, there's usually one or two week, and then, then it'll be meetings with individuals and in the evenings outside of that. You know, whether it be whatever, whatever happens to be the hot topic. Um, you know, one of the things that has come up recently is the development that's going, that they wanna put in across the bridge for in the bay. I had to meet with that developer a couple times, talk to him, and just kinda see where they're at. They need to get a feel for what I'm okay with, you know, and, and so I'll tell them, look, this is what I'm okay with as far as your development. You need to build our land development regulations. I'm not okay with you asking for exceptions. If you wanna, if you need exceptions, you're gonna need to go see Palm Coast, cuz they allow anything. You all, you know that, living in Palm Coast.
This is, uh, you're talking about, not the Margaritaville, another development is happening?
The one that's, uh, gonna go behind CVS and that big plot of land.
Okay.
They already have approvals, and they have for a very long time. However, the developer is trying to figure out, does he want to, you know, basically annex in Flagler Beach? Does he wanna annex in Palm Coast? Does he wanna stay in county? Where is the best fit for him? And, you know, he has a multimillion-dollar investment. He has to protect, he wants to get the most out of it, but we also need to what, well, my job is, is to make sure that we're protecting our surrounding areas. So if we can convince him to annex into, say, Flagler Beach, and he's willing to play by the rules and build to the Flagler Beach specifications, we've now got a win out of that versus if they annex into Palm Coast, and then they go before Palm Coast, and Palm Coast, uh, the trend right now is Palm Coast allows just about anything.
Yeah, I've been seeing that.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and that's not beneficial to Flagler Beach. We don't wanna have, you know, housing and a entire design that's not beneficial to our city almost in our city, like, literally right at our doorstep.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's strategic moves like that, that we as commissioners need to get ahead of. First of all, you gotta identify. You gotta know what they're doing, and then you gotta sit down and talk to them and figure out where they're at, and how can we bridge this gap? So basically, what we would be asking is can you change your model? Cuz their model is maximize the land, to get the absolute most you can out of it. But that's not beneficial to us. That's not beneficial to Flagler Beach. So how do you convince them to build a model that would be beneficial to our city that they can still make money on? And then also agree to even do it to begin with, because they potentially could make more money going to Palm Coast, but it'll be a inferior product. It'll be detrimental to our city. Nobody's happy. And so the other, the plus side is, he might make a little bit less money, but everybody ends up happier in the long run. And you end up with a much better design for the overall community.
I think you had something like that in your notes.
Yeah, well, what, I remember I, I was over at your store talking to you, and like, I, I, a lot of people were talking about, like, the Margaritaville construction, and they're like, oh, these city council people just doing whatever, whatever. And you said to me, you were like, look, man, that's a, a private piece of land that someone bought. Like, you can't tell them not to do that. Like, that's, this is America. You could build what you wanna build, where, where you want to.
You can to a point. So there's, there's a balance, right? So if you bought, let's say you buy a piece of property right across the street, you're allowed to put a house on. It's a residential lot. Now, you're allowed to put a house on it that meets certain rules. It has to be a certain size, construction type. It has to have certain setbacks. It can't just be anything you want.
Yeah.
But you can put a house there. Well, that same rule applies to commercial property, which is what that was. So when the new buyer came in and bought that piece of property, he's allowed to do certain things with it. Now, he can't do anything he wants, and there, there was some exceptions he asked for. Like, he asked if he could use three spaces that we had allocated for businesses in the parking pool, so he could bridge the gap, cuz he was about fifteen spaces short. Fifteen to twenty. And he asked if he could do that. That was the only exception that, that required, uh, the approval for that. So that's why when they say commissioners approved it, we did have to approve that one piece of it. But that property is commercial property, and you can put things there. And what I try to remind people is the product that is going there is not high intensity. Hotels do get traffic, but they don't get ton of it. People drive there, then they wander around the city, and then they leave. It's not high intensity as opposed to, there, there was other potential, you know, buyers that were looking to do like what Daytona has, where they have the multi-story mall, and it's a big, you know, like, filled of retail, and, and that's considered high intensity.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of things that could have got put there because it's commercial. But what citizens sometimes don't understand is there's property rights. If you buy a piece of commercial property, you can put commercial building on it. And, you know, it's unfortunate because I've heard feedback, well, the city should have bought it. Over three million dollars for that little tiny piece of dirt really wouldn't stand up to scrutiny from the taxpayers. It would, in concept, it's great, until they find out that per citizen, it would have been about eight hundred and fifty dollars cost per citizen in taxes.
Wow.
So if they find out their property tax is at one year is gonna go up to eight hundred and fifty dollars because we can, and that's just to buy it. That's not to even make an improvement to it.
Yeah.
You're just buying dirt, and you're buying a very small piece of dirt. And then the other thing is, if the city was to buy, and let's say we turned into a park, is that really the highest and best use of that piece of property? Because it kind of was a privately-owned park. It was a piece of dirt, and I say dirt cuz there wasn't a ton of grass.
It's kinda like parking for a veterans' park, really.
They had trees, you know, and they had a dumpster there and stuff, and I mean, but that was not the highest and best use of it. And I think anybody that applies logic to, to that argument knows that that's not sustainable. You can't leave it like that forever. Eventually, something's gonna go there. You know, and there's a running joke, you know, they're like, well, we're glad it's not a Waffle House, or, you know, cuz it could have been all those things.
Yeah.
It could have been a car wash right in the middle of the city.
Wow.
You know, and, yeah, cuz they, people have property. There's all kinds of things it could have been. And, you know, Flagler Beach, we have to be also real. Flagler Beach is not known for great quality hotels. And we got some hotels here, but they're not known for being high quality. You know, they're kinda run down. And that, that's just being realistic. So we, we need, if we're gonna, we are a tourist city, so we have to have hotel to be a tourist city, and it really needs to be a quality product, and it's gotta be something nice and high-end. And so it, it is a good fit. Um, I know it's an unpopular thing to put anything there. But I think the flip side of is, if you look at the big picture, what is there is going to end up being a really good product. It's going to help the city as opposed to hurt it. It's gonna help our businesses for sure, and it's gonna add to the tax base. A lot of people don't take into account hotels bring in an additional five percent tax that we can use directly. As a matter of fact, this year, we're applying for a grant which is funded by that five percent bed tax for almost, uh, well, it's a little over three-quarters of a million dollars. So I think it's around eight hundred thousand dollars that the city can get to use for projects, which in our case is gonna be, what we agree to do is, so far, this is dynamic, is to replace that boardwalk, the beat-up boardwalk that's in the middle of town. The two ends are good. The whole center part's bad. And that bed tax is going to pay for that replacement. And it's appropriate because who better to pay for a tourist destination like the boardwalk than tourists? People staying at the hotels. So it's, it's really symbiotic. And, and I know it's painful right now. You know, the, the parking's not great. They had to close some of the spots, you know, for liability and stuff, but in, when it's said and done, there's gonna be around eighty spots on, on the lot. All three sides except one hundred are, the roads are getting redesigned to have additional angle parking on both sides. They'll, they'll become one-way, and then they're gonna have angle parking on both sides. So you're gonna have additional parking on the street. You're gonna have a ton of parking on the site. It's gonna be low intensity with traffic. And then everybody benefits cuz you're, you know, you get people out.
And stuff, you know, walking around. Are they gonna have a restaurant in that building as well?
Yes.
Just a small, small one?
Yeah.
We were talking about that the other day.
Yeah, but that's not final, um, because their, their lobby, because the south wing of the hotel is elevated, and cars are gonna park below there. The east side of the building touches the ground, and that, they have to somehow figure out how to get a restaurant, a lobby, and all their other mechanicals there. They do have plans for it, but that can also change.
Um, did you?
What? Oh. Well, yeah, you, you brought up the pier, too, like, um, well, what's the deal with the pier? Like, a lot of people ask that.
I know. This is one of those projects that took a really, really long time to get to fruition. And anything that, basically what I tell people is, anything that touches water is going to take a really long time to get done.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it, it's, there's tons of permitting. You would be shocked to know, cuz a lot of people have no idea, and this is a little bit off-topic, but it kinda correlates to the timeline. The beach renourishment project is over twenty years old. That's how long it's been being worked on.
Wow. And that's, when you say renourishment, that's when they're putting the sand up on?
They're gonna dredge the sand. They're gonna change the grade of the beach. It's gonna be fully engineered, and it's guaranteed for fifty years. But that project has been in the pipeline for over twenty years.
Wow.
Yep. But back to the pier.
Yeah, I wanna talk about that after the pier, though, again, though, cuz that was one of the questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm like jumping ahead, but it kinda ties in to paint the picture of why it takes so long. So the pier.
So I know people were talking about, like, are you guys gonna keep a part of the pier and just replace the funky Pelican part? Or like, how's it gonna go? Is there a plan? Is, or is that still up in the air?
Nope. It's, uh, it's locked in. We're keeping the first hundred feet of the pier, and all the accessory structures with it. Funky stays, A-frame stays, Vern's radio station stays. What was the old bait shop, that will stay, and it'll get improved and become something. Maybe a bait shop, maybe, who knows? Maybe a museum. So the first hundred feet we're keeping, from that point on, then it'll become concrete, and it'll have the gradual increase in height, because the pier that we have currently, the reason why it's not getting repaired, it's totally condemned and is out of it's totally condemned and it's out of code. And it sits thirteen feet too low. That's why it keeps getting destroyed. The waves are literally coming over and they're breaking the pier off. And so the new pier will be thirteen feet higher, a little bit wider, and it'll have the same T design. It'll sit in the same footprint. And that starts this summer.
Is it gonna be as long as, cause remember like a few years ago, we had the wind hurricane and it knocked off a big chunk of it? Cause I remember back in the day when I was younger, the pier was like way longer. And is it gonna be originally to that length?
It'll be the original length that had, and it'll also have the old, if you remember the T on the end. Add a little T on the end. This will have the same. The only difference is, and it'll also be in the same footprint. This one will be just a little bit wider though. And the reason why it's pretty much following the exact same length pattern and everything is because of permitting. You, if you want to move the pier, that would've added years to the project. And it, we're already talking years to even get it fixed. So why add years unnecessarily? And it also risk funding for the project too, cause you could put it, make it too expensive.
Is it planned to start in twenty-five, the construction?
For the pier? Starts this summer.
Oh, it's this summer? Okay, alright.
So unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, both the beach and the pier project start at the same time.
One summer down?
Right. And that's the thing, it's like, let's just get it done.
What like takes so long for paperwork and stuff like that?
The main reason why, all, well, there's, you have permitting, but the main reason why is because we're not paying for it. So, all of these funding sources, you know, are coming in from all different directions. The beach renourishment project is an Army Corps project. That's a, that's funded at the national level. Washington DC funds that. Y'all know how fast Washington DC works on anything. And then when you take Flagler Beach into the mix, Washington DC kinda has the mentality of, what's Flagler Beach? You know, you have LA, you know, you have Seattle, and then like, so, they have all these huge, massive, high population, high return, you know, and high funded projects. And, and they're also in cities that can, yeah, and they, they can come up with money too. So for instance, Jax, if Jax is doing a project, Jax has got unlimited money, cause it's just the population and tax base. Flagler Beach doesn't have that. So we're like, hey, we need to do this project that's gonna cost over twenty million dollars. But we don't, we don't have the money for that. Right. Where Jax is like, hey, we'll just pay half if you could sign off on it and we'll do it next year. And so, the pier is also, um, that, that's getting funded from a lot of different sources. Uh, FEMA is covering the, the most of it, but there's a match. And then the match, we had to figure out, well, how are we going to pay for that match? And then we have to lobby at the state level to get the match paid for.
And just for clarity for the people out there, um, not me, of course I know, but if anybody didn't know, what is a match? That means, they're gonna be like, we'll pay twenty million, but you have to match this for like five million or something.
Right. And they, and they, they all have different parameters. Um, a lot of times, it's, it's matched, it's like for like. And, um, I forget what the percent match was on the pier. They, they all have different, different matches. Like when the Army Corps Renourishment comes, when that rolls around and the bill comes through, that is fifty fifty. And uh, so, but what we had to do, because we're a small city, we don't have a huge tax base, and we can't pull out ridiculous amounts of money to pay for these projects. We have to lobby all these groups to where our local tax base doesn't basically pay anything. And that's, that's what takes huge amounts of time.
Okay, um, everybody, so we have some people in the room right now. I also wanna let you know, so, we have Eric Cooley in the house right now, and he is city commissioner and business owner and on the chair. And if anybody would like to comment a question, we can also, you know, ask some live questions for anybody who might be watching. But, um, like I, I just wanna let the people who might not know that we do have Mr. Eric Cooley in the house today. Um, so another question that I had, and, um, this is going to, uh, back kinda to the pier, but about Fourth of July. So there's kinda like, and I don't wanna like say, are there any problems between Flagler Beach and Palm Coast, but, there was some like tug of war about where the fireworks gonna be let off at, and, um, where did we kinda end off at that for now?
Where it sits right now, is up in the air. As of last year, we did as a county, we did a joint one. Everybody went in, Fennel, Palm Coast, County, Flagler Beach, all went in and paid for a display at the airport. Airport was good logistic wise, uh, just because of the population growth. Um, there, there has been concerns, and, and I'm one of the people that brings up these concerns about, what is the safe carrying capacity for Fourth of July if Flagler Beach chooses to do fireworks? We have fourteen sworn police officers. If we bring in thirty to fifty thousand people, cause that's how many come in on Fourth of July, how do we keep everybody safe? And then, so that, then they're like, well, just bring in police from elsewhere. Well, elsewhere also has Fourth of July going on too. They don't really have a whole lot of people to spare because they're dealing with Fourth of Julys as well. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts to that. We got in a little bit of a back and forth, a cou- over the last couple of years with Palm Coast. Because Flagler Beach was on again, off again with getting the fireworks put together. So last Fourth of July, um, under another city manager, we kind of missed getting, the fireworks booked on time. Uh, city administration missed the deadline. Fireworks vendors is like, hey, you're coming to us too late. We're already booked. So there was a scramble for Flagler Beach to try to figure out, can we get an actual firework vendor, here on the Fourth of July, this late in the game? Uh, cause I believe it was like around March or something when they tried to reach out. But then Palm Coast is like, hey, what are y'all doing? Are you doing it or not doing it? And it kinda got in this big like mess. And so it ended up getting decided that, it would be a good idea to do it out the airport as a combined thing. Flagler Beach has not made a decision what they're doing this year. It's still up in the air.
And it's February.
You know, I used to like back in the day when you go there and it was like totally packed. People had to park all the way over the bridge. And it was like, it made it like a day, whereas like when you go to the airport now, it's like, it's almost like it's fake. It's like you're there, it's so like,
Has a little more commercial feel.
Yeah, it's not, doesn't feel like the real like beach, Fourth of July of like back in the day. So I mean,
Yeah, and it's, it's unfortunate because back in the day, so the last big fireworks celebration we had was nineteen. And since nineteen, the population in Flagler County and surrounding areas has grown exponentially. But even in nineteen, if you remember in nineteen, it was, it was kinda a little out of control in nineteen. Um, there was, there was big brawls, there was, some grass, pepper spray ended up having to get deployed to control some of it, and it, it got a little sketchy.
Yeah, but that's, that's,
I just know some of those people.
Was that you by chance?
No, but it might've been somebody in here's brother.
Possibly.
But, um, it, it's just like, it, it definitely, when you put it that way, it is too much going on.
That's just, that's just nostalgia though by me, you know, for my life.
Well, and that's the thing is, when people think of Fourth of July, that is Americana, it's nostalgia. And i- it's a very emotional issue. The problem is when it becomes too emotional of an issue, you end up losing logic. So the logic side is, how do we keep all of these people safe? And how do we make sure the quality of life is maintained in Flagler Beach and we don't burn the city to the ground trying to put on an event?
An old school.
That we've outgrown.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the unfortunate.
It's like when we're the adults now.
Right. And, and we have to really be smart about it. So if we look at it, and we, and we go, okay, we had really large brawls, we were probably understaffed with police, and this is back in nineteen. Now we have more people. And we had to deploy pepper spray just to get control of situations. And we had all these things going on. If we did that now, with the erosion of behavior in society, cause y'all see people act worse than they did back then too.
And the gun laws changed.
Really gotta sit there and go, can we do this and keep everybody safe?
Like Wild Wild West there.
Cause if you, you know, you can have all the Americana and you can have all nostalgia you want, and that's all good until somebody gets seriously hurt. And, and then it becomes not so fun. So i- it's a tough thing to balance. And, and you know, I would, if I was trying to stay political and, and try to make everybody happy, I would say, look, I, I really, think this is a great idea and we should do it, and yes, but I can't do that. I have to be practical and logical and say, can we do this? And I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm only for it if we can do it safely. Now, we know we can do a parade, we know we can have great events in Veterans Park, we know we can have a great beach day, we know we can do all those things safely. It's the fireworks at the end and the, the uncontrollable potentially crowd that comes with the fireworks.
I just wanna put this out here real quick, and I just had this idea. What if it was in Flagler, but all the way from like Beverly Beach and it had multiple displays? So instead of consolidating it right there, it was just spread out over the whole.
What do you mean multiple displays?
You know, like have some going off from Beverly Beach, some going off from the main.
That's too much money.
No judgment and brainstorm.
But it's funny, but you gotta be real. So who's gonna go to Beverly Beach for fireworks?
Like, I'll tell you this though, the last like few years that I actually went, like me and my girlfriend, we always go down a little bit. So we can still see it, but it's still quiet. I don't,
And here's the other concern, is the, uh, local police departments, uh, specifically sheriff, has had a lot of concerns about multiple displays. So if we do one display at the airport, we can concentrate all our police forces combined in one spot, and you're okay. If you do multiple displays, large displays, now you're trying to split up our little police sources.
Idea right then. I'm not the commissioner, I just, you know, I throw out the ideas.
I got a question about the commissioner. How many times are you allowed to run or be actual, not run, but like, do you have like a eight-year thing like presidency or?
No, there's in Flagler Beach, just because of our population, there's no term limits.
I was about to like, make like a, a joke, like, um, the Putin interview just happened or whatever, but, that's crazy. So like you'd be commissioner for like thirty years if everybody likes you?
I'm not gonna do it forever. We, we do have a commissioner who I believe holds the title of longest serving in county so far. Commissioner Mealy has been doing it for a really long time. I can't, I don't know the, the amount of years. It's a really long time. I wanna say she's around her sixteenth year. Here's the problem though, because of our population, if you did term limits, you could risk not being able to fill a seat at all.
That makes sense.
And that's a genuine risk. And you also run into, you know, potential quality of candidate issues as well. So let's say you potentially can't fill a seat. And then somebody who maybe is not the best fit for doing it, they're just like, well, I'll do it. That's what you got. And then now they're an elected official for the whole term. Unless they really, really mess it up and somehow, you know, get taken out by the governor or something like that, but that would have to be egregious.
What do you mean by get taken out?
The government can actually pull people out of position. Not assassinate.
So, that's, that's pretty interesting. Um, now, if people were to ask like, how, what exactly does the power of the commissioner entail? What, what would you say? So you preside, like you said, over building constructions? And laws?
So the commission is a legislative body. We, we legislate. So we make laws. We change laws, and we also are the ones that can give permission for exceptions to laws. So if you're building a, let's say you wanted to build a house, and there is a legitimate and real reason why you have to deviate from a building code. Commission can, if we agree and we vote on it, we could give you that exception. And so we can, we can allow you to have an exception to an existing law. And commissioners, you know, no one commissioner can do that. It all has to be voted on. So i- it's, it's interesting, um, in the whole legislative side. So what people don't understand though is, sometimes people think commissioners and city manager jobs, because different municipalities function different ways, are interchangeable. So we have two people that work for the body, the elected body, which is the commission. And that's the city attorney and the city manager. And then under the city manager is the entire operation of the city. Police, fire, maintenance, roads and traffic, you know, everything. They all report to the city manager. City manager reports to us. So from a city operational point of view, commissioners aren't in charge of none of that. But we get all the phone calls. I just got a phone call, there was a pothole on Twenty Sixth Street. Somebody was like, hey, when are you gonna get that fixed? Well, I'm not gonna get it fixed, but I will, you know, forward your message. We don't run the operation of the city in any way, shape or form. You know, in some inexperienced folks that run for commission, will make promises and they'll say, I will make sure, X, Y, Z will get fixed when I'm in office. But they have no direct control over that. And they, they can't actually make that promise, cause they, they don't control it. It's up to the city manager.
Who's hired, not elected.
Who's hired by the commission to make sure that those things get done. Now, city manager works for commission. Commission can lean on city manager. And say, hey, this is important to our taxpayers. You need to change the priority of this and, and make that. And we do that all the time in meetings. It, because our, our job is, we also represent, and we're the voice of the people. We're representatives. Cause this is a representative form of government in Flagler Beach. So my job is to take a collective consensus of what y'all think. You know, you might wanna strip club in the city, and then all the other people might not. And so I have to take that collective consensus and say, okay, here's what my constituents feel about this particular issue, and then put that into action. And you know, so when it, when particular topics come up, I would say, this is not a good idea, and here's why. And this is how the people I know that I talk to every day feel about, which is a lot.
Now, I imagine with like you, you probably have like a lot to deal with, with like, old, not old people in age, but old, like long time residents versus like newer residents. Cause I feel like the people that have been here, don't want nothing to change whatsoever. When the newer people are like, how come we don't have this? Or how come we don't have that? I mean, is that like a real battle all the time too?
It's a huge battle.
Yeah, is that like your biggest?
And it's a, it's even more so a battle in beachside communities. Cause the, you know, the culture of the, the old Florida beachside community is, is very real and, and, and that's one of the reasons I moved here, and I wanna hold on to that. But at the same time, our county's growing. And it's one of the fastest growing counties in the whole country.
Yeah, again.
And, and so we also have, we're combating that. And so to hold, yes, we wanna hold on to the things that, that are important to us. And you know, our character and our charm and our culture and all those pieces, but at the same time, we also have to adjust. And there, there's a group of the population that are like, we don't need to adjust. Why? We're doing things just fine the way they are. Well, I don't know if y'all looked outside the gates right across the bridge, but it's a whole nother world there. And that world is spilling into Flagler Beach.
Well, luckily for them, it's getting so expensive that it's kinda sorting a lot of people out. If you don't got like seven hundred grand, you can't come anywhere.
Yeah, and that's Florida as a whole with the real estate. But even more so on the beachside communities. It's a really tough thing to balance, cause who gets caught in the middle? We do, the elected body. Cause you, you know, you look at the hotel, you have, we'll call it the, uh, the old Salty's, that have been here for forever and want literally nothing to change. Without understanding that you have a commercial lot that's for sale, it's gonna change. And so the people that get caught in the middle is us, and we have to try to go, okay, well, what can we do? What do we have control over without violating this person's property rights? Cause if, if you make a bad decision as a commissioner and you deny something, they can just take you to court. And they can sue the city, and they can sue you personally, if you violate their property rights. And you know, property rights are, one of the pluses is, they're not subjective. They're very black and white. And it's unfortunate, because a lot of people think it's subjective. They're like, why'd you put a hotel there? That was stupid. There's all kinds of better things you could've put there. It wasn't our call. It's the property owner that decides what can go there.
If you jam them up too much, it can actually cost the city even more if they end up suing you, right?
Right. And then, then you'll end up getting whatever you try to fight. Plus, you have to pay out more for all your legal fees for, you know, messing with the process. So that's where a city attorney comes in, and you know, you gotta really consult with them and say, I personally don't. I personally don't think my constituents are gonna like this. And the city attorney is like, your constituents don't have a choice. And then you gotta try to explain it and but there is things that we do control. But putting hard stops on things and that whole subjective thing and the the NIMBYism, not not my backyard mentality, just it it doesn't exist.
Before we get to the next question, I just once again wanna shout out our sponsors. Uh Terrence Roberson with the credit repair and Billy Dizius with the real estate. If you can, and if you're interested, click on their link, follow them, like them, subscribe. Dave, one thing that I'm interested in, but you you put it down in the notes is uninsurable and the grandfather in Airbnbs, can you? Expel on that a little bit?
Yes, um. I I heard at first like there's a lot of, you know, a lot of people not flipping houses because of the insurance. Cause like, you know, a lot of the older houses that you see like is like, why isn't, why aren't people flipping these houses and fixing them up? And then I I had heard from someone that like, oh, you can't insure your house. At Flagler Beach, is that true or is there different zones or what?
It it's, the flooding is really causing the issue. We have some old builds in Flagler that were built in flood zones. And. Shockingly, they flooded. And and a lot of them multiple times. But here's the thing, the you know, you can only put insurance claims in so many times before they they say, you know, we're done. And so there is property that, you know. It it exists. It's a real thing. There are some properties out there in the world that become uninsurable, you know, due to repeated claims. And or the insurance becomes so high, it's just not, it's not worth it. And then you have property owners that and it it's unfortunate because this is happening a lot. So we've had a lot of floods recently over the last, you know, five, four, five years. Well, somebody floods, they fix their house up and they immediately get out of it and they wanna sell. That's fine. Somebody from out of state who doesn't know the area and doesn't know the islands like. I can buy a cheap beach house. They move in, six months later, they flood out. They had, they didn't do their homework. And they didn't realize they're in a flood zone, buying a flood house. They didn't ask for a property disclosure. And so you have this vicious cycle of folks that have bought these, bought and sold these flood houses. I'm part of uh the Flagler Strong Group and I do the hurricane cleanups. And there's homes that I've been in four times with four different owners, the same house. And I told the owners, cause the owner's like, what do I do? I said, I'm gonna be honest with you, this is my fourth time in this house. And you're the fourth new face in this same house that I've been in. I said, you gotta sell and get out. But you also have to tell. Your buyer that you flooded. And what that does is you potentially as a seller are gonna take a loss selling a house. But the new buyer coming in knows, I'm probably gonna have to doze this and put something else here. And that's okay. But eventually that that's what's gonna happen to the the homes that are in these flood areas. A lot of, a lot of people come to the city and they're like. You need to make sure that my house doesn't flood. And the first question I ask is, are you in a flood zone? If the answer is yes, then I'm like, you're gonna flood. That that's the whole purpose of having a flood zone is to tell you you're gonna flood. But the other side of that coin is. We have city infrastructure that's put in place to help with drainage and help with the flooding and everything and they're. And we're battling right now a lot of aging infrastructure that doesn't work correctly. So one of the things that folks have heard me say over and over for the last couple of years is. If there's any piece of equipment. In the entire city that has a label on it that says City of Flagler Beach, it needs to work correctly. Cause if you're in, if you're in a flood zone and you flood because of mother nature. That's not something the city can prevent. If you're in a flood area or a non-flood area and you flood because a piece of infrastructure did not work correctly. That's a miss on our part. And that's where I've become really passionate about making sure all city infrastructure works as it's supposed to. And folks have heard me. Beating that drum over and over and over again um with the the high priority. Of making sure that they will not flood because say, you know, y'all know, we you you got a little slope here to twenty sixth street. We don't want water coming down that street, cause eventually it's gonna stop somewhere and it can't stop in somebody's yard.
Luckily, we're halfway down.
But that water is going by you and it's going somewhere and that's where it becomes critical is it can't. End up in somebody's house. And so it's those pieces of infrastructure. We have roads. We don't want the roads to be the cause of flooding out somebody's house. Or a pipe not functioning correctly.
Yeah, I was living over on uh Fourteenth Street and that's a while ago and like over by the tennis courts, I noticed you guys did like a lot of uh sewer work over there. It flooded out one time. Well, probably more than once, but one time that I saw and then like very shortly afterwards, there was people there. Um, I guess we're cleaning out the uh the drainpipe or whatever.
The pipes, the swales, we've been working on one-way valves. We're working on reengineering um. You know, some of the land that's around certain buildings and everything and and there's a lot of projects that we have. That are in the pipeline right now and it's a big focus for the city. I would say water control is probably the number one focus going on right now for the city outside of existing projects like Pier and Sand.
And I know uh we were talking about the skate park. That's not exactly Flagler Beach, but that's still an issue that had to get run by you. And different things like that.
Well, it didn't have to get run by me. Um. I was familiar with the condition of the skate park, so. When I saw the posts that Steven made, you know, I kinda. Yeah, Steven, Steven was good by shining a light on the project, cause I hadn't been in the skate park. Previous to his post for probably about six months. Um, I'm usually just skating on my street, you know, dodging cars and stuff, but. So he shined a light on that and all I did was I just kind of talked to a couple of folks that were in that group that were trying to get that done and. And kinda helped guide them through the governmental process of here's what you need to do. To expedite a fix to this. And then also myself jump in. Get ahold of other county commissioners, cause it's a county park. And I'll let them know, this is a, you know, this is a culture piece, this is high importance. You know, to our beachside community. So I reached out to Andy Danson, the M Pennington or County Commissioners. And said, can you elevate the priority of this project? And they did. They responded and and they got it done quick.
Awesome.
Yeah, I remember seeing that. Yeah, like it was real quick, actually.
Yeah, that was a top priority. They got on that real fast because uh of the amount of focus and and the thing is though is um. A lot of citizens. They see things, but they don't really interact with us until it's basically we call it on fire. And so. What we always ask is, as leaders of the city, I don't drive around. And just kinda randomly look at stuff. So I can't see everything. If there's a pothole on your street, I'm probably not gonna see it until that one random time I might end up in on your street. Which probably won't ever happen, cause I I don't belong on your street. And so, you know, I just uh I always ask people, just tell me, you know, um. Don't let it, don't let it become a fire issue and then start screaming at me because I probably didn't see it. Everybody knows where I am during the day. I actually just gave my schedule.
So if you guys wanna know where to come complain at, that's where he's gonna be. What were you gonna say?
Oh, no, you go ahead with your thought.
Um, so we were also talking about how far Flagler Beach actually goes. Um, so. It goes. Past um like that water tower. And it goes um to High Bridge. Is that like?
Doesn't go all the way down to High Bridge. So if you're going on A one A where the water tower is, you're gonna see condo, condo condos. And then right at the end of those condos is a park. But right, you'll see a sign where it says, you know, city limits. So right where the park starts at the very last condo, that's the southern city limits. And there's um, that's where the golf course is and the, you know, all the subdivision, the Ocean Palm sub subdivision that's down in there.
Is Beverly Beach a part of Flagler Beach?
No.
Really? So they have their own commissioner?
Yeah, they have their own government. They have their own mayor. Ever, no, they actually pay us for police. And sanitation. And building inspections. Because they're just so small, they can't afford that type of infrastructure. So they, what they do is they can at times, and they did this for a while. So they, there was something that happened and they didn't like the job we were doing and with our sanitation, they thought we were too expensive or something, so they fired us. Hired um. Waste Pro or something, can, somebody who was working for county. And um they did that. And after a year, they came back to us, cause we did a way better job. They paid for our services.
You know, I will shout out the Flagler Beach trash guys too, because I think they do do a good job.
They do a great job.
Yeah, I think so. Like I reckon they take like big stuff, don't screw around, like you pretty much put whatever out there and it's it's gone. No hassle.
Well, I can endorse that, but. They they do a great job and also the recycling. We are one of the only cities that does true recycling. So and I'll give you an example. Palm Coast. Y'all get your recycling picked up, right? Where does it go?
I know a little something about this.
Goes to the landfill with the trash. They don't even recycle it. You put it all in that bin and they take it to the landfill.
I always wondered about that.
Yeah, that's that's true. And uh it's, you know, it's unfortunate. So when you do glass recycling in Flagler Beach. It goes to our yard and it goes through a a big giant pulverizing machine and we turn it into. Small glass pellets that are like the size of peas basically.
Put it back in the sand.
Nope. Um, we keep it and we sell it and and we can use it as mulch, as sand retention. Then we have the other part of the machine that will actually will turn it into sand. We have two separate piles. And uh we sell it and actually uh some of our glass is actually being used by NASA. It's crazy. And the reason why they're using us is because we're in the on, one of the only places that actually really recycles glass.
Yes, I I read this thing the other day, is they they changed the color of Sprite bottles. From, remember they used to be green to clear, so people would stop seeing them in landfills. And identifying them as sprites, because they weren't recycling them.
Right. They just go landfill. Now, with our plastic, we only recycle certain kinds of plastics, like stretch wrap, plastic bags and all that. We have a deal with Trex. So Trex actually buys it from us. To then turn into a Trex product, the decking.
Okay.
They buy all that.
I know Trex at Home Depot.
Right. And so we actually really recycle and uh hopefully Palm Coast will get on that and they'll get environmentally friendly, but it's all cost based. It's gotta be.
You guys think you're better than us, both of you guys.
I don't, I don't think it. I know. Like Palm Coast does a lot of, a lot of things really well, like build tons of houses, but. Just anybody from Palm Coast is, I'm only joking. Y'all, y'all are great. And I actually are the uh the elected in Palm Coast uh. More or less, um, most of them are all uh, you know, very helpful and and we get along great.
Shout out my boy Nick Clufus. And um we're definitely, everybody from Palm Coast, we need you guys to buy a coast shirt. So we can really show these Flagler Beach people who we are when we come over to their side.
Know a shirt I'm gonna make now? Like you seen the Simpsons meme with like the Simpsons like wearing a tuxedo and like Homer's got his thing on and like. And and Saint Pete, there was the thing like, they all think they're better than people in Tampa. When we get like a Flagler Beach people with like Homer with this tuxedo sitting on the couch. Down on Palm Coast.
Just get a T-shirt that says Flagler Beach is better. I don't wanna stir the pot though, cause I know. They'll get a bunch of hate and stuff for it. But we know, we we love Palm Coast. You know, we, there used to be, it was interesting. There used to be a weird dynamic where. There there was some beef between Palm Coast and Flagler Beach and I think a lot of that kinda just went away and you know. I mean, I'm sure there's there's some people that that hate on different cities, but a lot of the elected honestly drives that. And with some of the changes in the elected bodies for the cities, you know, that kinda go away. Cause they, we we all help each other and. Yeah, and and you know, we're hoping Palm Coast gets on the recycling thing. There's no way Flagler Beach could ever handle the volume. That Palm Coast does.
We're like, look, man, we just gotta, you know what I mean? Bro, it's everywhere. But um, you know, shout out my Flagler Boys too. Love you guys. But um, what do you got?
Oh, I wanted to go back real quick, um, because I've heard a lot of people like talk about it, even when we had that Mike Norris guy that's running for Palm Coast Mayor. You know, he was talking about. And I've seen people comment this before, like people just keep piling rocks on the beach. Rocks on the beach. Now, you mentioned the dredging project, but that has nothing to do with like the Koquina and stuff, right? The seawall.
There, well, there are two different organizations. So when you see the rocks, that's done by FDOT. So the rocks are a stabilization project for A one A. They serve no purpose as far as beach. See, a lot of people get confused. They're like, well, why are you guys doing that for the dune? FDOT's not doing that for the dune. They're doing that for the road and that's it. It has nothing to do with the dune. The beach renourishment project is Army Corps Engineers. All those rocks are gonna get covered. Now, the rocks are gonna stay there. So FDOT has multiple ways you can do what's called revetments for roads. On the north side of town, you got the seawall. And then in there's one little spot on the south side of town where there's a seawall and then there's the seawall project that's about to start. Literally right here where you guys are at, there's gonna be a seawall going in there. And the reason why is because even those seawalls are very, very, very expensive. They're very good and they work very well. The rock revetment, they can have done quickly and they can have it done cheaply. For FDOT projects. So that's why you see the rocks on the side of the road all the time and they were always falling down. They get washed and eroded and all, and then they just come back and redo it.
Yeah, cause that's what people were saying. They're like, well, they just keep putting rocks and more rocks. Yeah, it's cheaper, but you put rocks everywhere, but that's not. You guys anyway, then it's.
No, that's the road. But we have a say so in it. It's limited to a point. Um, we have been, ever since the north side seawall went in, we've been pushing for. Quality seawalls. Because what they do is they put the seawall in, they bury it under sand. You can't even tell there's a seawall there until there's a hurricane. And then all of a sudden, the seawall protects everything and they're amazing. But they're also ridiculously expensive. So FDOT only puts them in the highest risk areas. Because you can do the rock and sand project two hundred times over before you've paid for a seawall. Yeah, they're, the seawalls are extremely expensive. Like they don't even, the rebar that goes in them isn't even made out of steel. It's made out of carbon fiber and fiberglass. You know, because they, if it was steel, it would just rust. So there's all kinds of. High-tech concrete and all the geo surveys have to be done. There's a lot that go into it that drives the cost up.
I don't think anybody realizes that either. They just like bitch about the rocks over and over again.
Right. And what they don't realize is that, well, first of all, our taxpayers. They do pay for it in the gas tax and the infrastructure and all, but. It's not a local tax. So they're not, that money is gonna go towards road projects. And if we can get it, then great. And so I'm okay with them doing that project a hundred times over, cause. That's us getting the money versus somebody else.
Makes sense.
Um, so now. I feel like it is deep enough into the episode. I am gonna ask. A lot of younger people wanna know. Like, and you can't really answer for Palm Coast, but in Flagler Beach, like. Why are there no like strip clubs or anything like that? You know, there's a couple of bars. Or even not even a strip club, but like a club, you know, there's that bank. Right there, Bank of America it used to be where nothing's going on. A friend of mine talked about like putting a club there, you know what I mean? It, are these things allowed? Um, how? What would be the red tape that is kinda stopping that?
Well, Flagler Beach used to have a strip club. Uh, back in the day. And the. Population base was not receptive to the strip club. Um, it doesn't. Represent the demographic of Flagler Beach. So Daytona, right? Different demographic, may, you know, the age makeup, everything about the way the the city's designed. Is more conducive to a strip club than say Flagler Beach. Flagler Beach is based on our median age, income, home price. Lack of business sector here, you know. A strip club is not a really good fit. But back when there was a strip club here and this is, this predates me. Uh, the citizens fought it and they won. And then since then, legislation was passed. Where there won't be any more strip clubs. Regular clubs is a different story. There's nothing stopping your friend from buying the Bank of America building from whoever owns it and putting a club in there. Yeah, and and a lot of uh our bars. Function as clubs, you know, tortoos, they got their ladies night, Finn's got their top deck ladies night going. So they they have their, you know, their good parties and all, but there's nothing uh stopping that. It's it's only the adult entertainment that. That has gotten banned in Flagler. And that was before me. I don't know how the legal process of the legislation went down. I do know that. Based on our citizen. You know, demographics, it probably would not get well received if that were. You know, came to be. I and also you gotta think too, as as a club owner. Is there enough clientele for that business here to even make it? Uh, you probably, I guess, I mean, you might be there every night.
I mean, just like old rich guys? Yeah, I think the clientele is here. But I get what you're saying.
Well, and here's the good thing about any type of legislation, right? If there was a desire with the population. You can change laws whenever you want.
Yeah, it's just hard, you know what I mean? Cause it's like, and I'm not speaking on anyone in particular, but you know. I feel like guys, they might be with their wife and they're like, oh, can you believe this? Who's gonna vote yes on a strip club? She's like, you're gonna vote no, right, honey? He's like.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that I would, um, I would probably not be for it just based on what I hear off the citizens and and also what I know of what our citizens want our city to be. However, that doesn't mean I would say no to that forever, but there would have to be a really, really solid argument about how this would be a good fit for our city.
That makes sense.
That's a, that's a big hill to climb.
I just wish it's like, you know, you could almost put it like all the way north side, all the way south side.
Last time they did it, they did it really far south.
It was at where um, Etron Grill is. That was.
Okay, oh, was it? Okay, so that's, that's like on what, um, nineteenth or something like that, eighteenth, right about there?
But I'll tell you this, back when it was there, the citizens lost their minds. And uh, that would not be a political thing that I would be wanting to.
I wish I could read a couple of those, cause I really wanna see if it's like the wives, like women who were like writing letters, like I cannot believe it. This lady, she walked outside like, I mean, what, cause it's like, it's inside. It's not like you really saw anything.
But I think there was like drug activity and all kinds of stuff over there with that. And in addition to like the loud music, cause it's quiet over there, like, well, over here.
You know, you have the nature of the business too. I mean, it's, that, that kind of.
Their husbands were there all the time.
Yeah, it's just not, um.
Conducive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I can tell you that, that's not, I don't think that would fly here.
It's not gonna. But like you said, the indoor actual normal club, we might be able to make that happen at the Bank of America.
Right. There's nothing stopping clubs per se.
Got you.
If anything, you might have a particular time you might need to cut off. Um, there might be an ordinance for that. Do you have sound ordinances, but it's all contained inside? There, there's nothing stopping that. But it, it's just a matter of, can you actually pull a, a big enough crowd to do it? And with Palm Coast, you might. Or it might be too far removed from Palm Coast. It might be better fit in where the population is in Palm Coast.
I think the harder thing might just be trying to find the girls, but that's all another conversation. So but my last main question that I had was, New Smyrna Beach is known as one of the shark capitals of America, definitely. Um, they're like second in the world behind South Amer- or South Africa, but does that ever come down to Flagler? Like, do we have a lot of shark attacks? I never really hear about that much. I know they just found the fifteen hundred pound one. We're supposed to talk to the ocean, ocean guy. But um, we're not really.
There's not really shark attacks in Flagler Beach. Um, there, there has been bites over the years. Um, I think all, every surfer, cause I'm big in the surf community. I know a lot of them and I think there's probably not one surfer out on the water that doesn't have shark story of some sort. So the concern is real. Um, but here, the other thing is a lot of these stories get highly, you know, dramatized from the news too. So if somebody gets bit, you might get a few punctures or something, but it's gonna be worldwide in like five minutes. And um, you know, shark attacks are very rare. Um, shark bites obviously are less rare, but you know, you also got jellyfish stings, you got, you know, crabs trying to get your feet, you know, you got all kinds of stuff. So there, I mean, here's the thing, we're playing out there in the water. That is not our playground.
Yeah.
And we're land animals. We don't belong out there. And the things that are in that water let us know we don't belong out there.
Yeah.
But we still, you know, it's there, it's there to love, but you gotta really respect it. Um, and anyone who's paying attention, especially the surfers, you know, they keep their eyes open. They, they keep an eye on what type of shark, how big it is, you know, movement of the bait pods and, and, but I'll tell you the biggest issue that, that's out there in the, in the water is uh, jellyfish.
Wow. Um, when you say issue, you mean just from people being stung like, or?
Well, just the, the frequency of injuries. You know, if you're out in the water, um, if you get a good manor sting, that's gonna be way worse than getting bit by a shark.
I've gotten a good manor sting before. Yeah, I got like wrapped up in the. Shocking me, shocking me, shocking me.
Really?
It was in Jacksonville Beach. It was in the water and it was just like getting grabbed, man. And I was like all up in the tentacles.
Did it hurt?
Yeah, yeah, I was like.
Manor stings are.
Yeah, it hurt a lot, man. I was probably like eleven or something like that, when maybe ten. Yeah.
Starts like it stuck you. Um, you know, if a, if a shark comes up and just tags you, I mean, I think everybody's been bit at some point by a dog. Yeah, I mean, and sharks do that too to people. You know, they'll, they'll, they wanna see what you taste like or you're messing with their area. You know, you look like something. I mean, they'll come up and they'll just, they'll take a pecky or something. It's, it's, can be traumatizing, but that's not necessarily a shark attack per se, is like what the news will have you think.
Yeah.
I think the really big sharks too are like a little further back.
We get like the whites and stuff, the gray whites that are out there. Um, they, they stay a little bit in the cooler water. But they've been known to come semi-close. It's very rare.
I've seen some sharks. Um, you know, one thing that, because.
You went from strip clubs to sharks.
And I see you got some notes, so I wanna make sure we get through anything you might.
Oh no, my notes are only just to help me answer questions. I got all kinds of info, you know.
Awesome. Um, so you know, the, the running portion is coming up and you know, I, I don't know if I can vote for you or not, but I will if I can.
You're a Palm Coast resident, can't.
Well.
The only thing you can do is you can endorse me. You can do that.
Vote for Eric Cooley.
You gotta address the Flagler Beach people, cause your Palm Coast people can't. They can vote for like Clufus and stuff.
So I want you to kind of speak, because that's what I was gonna say. One thing I love about podcasts and these conversations we have is we could pull this back up two years from now. So when we go to revote for you, what's something that we need to hold you accountable for to be like, you know what? I am gonna revote for him.
Well, reasons that you vote for me and accountability are two different things.
Cause I think we get that mixed up with like, say, you know, Biden and stuff where he was, says he's gonna do certain things and then things may or may not get done. And then now here we are the next time, you know what I mean? And some people forget, you know what I mean? So I'm gonna try and like, I'm gonna clip this up.
Yeah, I'll put it this way. So I've been doing this two terms now.
Okay.
And so what I would say is what I'm going to do in my third term will be more of what I've been doing in my first two terms and the same exact things what I stand for. And, and the only reason I would do more of it is just simply because I'm more proficient at the job. This is a, this job has a very big learning curve. Um, anybody new to this job, it takes at least the first two years of your term to just get the basics and, and to really be proficient at. My things that I stand for is fiscal accountability. Uh, when you watch our budget meetings, I'm one of the more vocal ones is saying no to a lot of things and, and why. And I've been consistent doing that the whole time in office. Um, I don't say no to every budget because we do put out good budgets. I say no to the processes that when we build the budget, all the things, you know, can we have this shiny new toy? No, we can't. Or we need to wait on that. This isn't the right time for it. So all of my no's come in the budget workshop. So when it comes budget time, I don't need to say no to the budget. I have said no to the budget multiple times, uh, only because other commissioners didn't see eye to eye when we built the budget. They wanted more shiny new toys in there than what I wanted. I only use that as an example, not to invalidate what they wanted. It's just say, they wanted more things than what I wanted. So I have done that. I've, I've also pushed for rollback when it's practical to do, as long as we don't put our city in a bind. Cause you know, you get some, sometimes you get these politicians. There's one in Palm Coast that says he would rather drink antifreeze and vote yes to any type of tax increase. That is an invalid position to have. You can't take that position. Look at what's happened to the cost of goods now. How are you going to run a city paying more in labor, more in expenses and then say you're gonna lower taxes and do that every single year? It's not sustainable. You can't do that. You can do it a little bit if you explode the population through crazy building growth because now you're building your tax base, but that's not sustainable. Eventually it's gonna come to a head and you have to raise taxes. So it, it's like false promises. But fiscal accountability, questioning everything. And then saying no to the things that you believe in. I'm also, I, I like to look at as I'm, I'm very balanced when it comes to legislation. Um, I'm open-minded when new things come up. I'm not opposed to change. Uh, I tend to question things quite a bit. There's an initiative going on right now. One of the topics that I brought up that's generated a lot of buzz in the media is one of the things we're paid to do is take a, just an analytical look at our processes as a city and say, does this make sense? One thing I looked at is our mayor doesn't vote. Our mayor is put in position by votes. And our mayor's elected and our mayor's held accountable to our taxpayers for doing a job which is representing them, but the mayor can't vote. And so then the question comes up in conversation with citizens is like, well, if you don't have a mayor that votes, like what do they do? What's, what's their purpose? And it becomes ceremonial at that point. They do ribbon cuttings, they give speeches, they do all that stuff, but, but is that what you want your mayor to represent? And so one of the things I brought up in our meetings is do we as a citizen base, do we wanna have, if we go through all the trouble of picking a mayor and voting on a mayor and putting them in office and wanting them to do a job of representing us, but then not giving them a voice, is taking the, their right to vote on issues in commission meetings, taking that away from them to an elected person, is that really efficient? And they can't represent you. They can sit there and yell and put, you know, say, hey, I don't agree with that, but if the commission knows you don't vote, are you gonna listen to that? And so it gets in a, so what I do is, you know, I, I can say moving forward, I'm going to look at things that might, you know, need process improvements or maybe another look at it. And I might not be right. Maybe people here don't want our mayor to vote on issues. From what I hear from citizens, they do, which is why I brought it up. But I got, you know, at the same time, we have folks that don't like change, that like things exactly the way they are and wanna keep it that way.
So what'd you have to do? Like put that like, get rid of the council and then the council will vote? How many people are on the council?
We have five commissioners and one mayor.
Okay.
So the process is if you wanna change how the, the mayor votes, it has to get voted on by the people. Which means it would need to go to referendum and have to go on the ballot. So we as a commission would have to decide, do we want to even put this on the ballot to give our citizens a chance to vote on this? So we have to decide that. And then if it does go to vote, then our citizens take it from there. And they vote and they say, yes, we like this or no, we don't. Now there's another way you can get things to referendum is the citizens, citizens can petition it and do it themselves. This one would not follow that. This one would be a commission driven one if that's what they decided to do. And I, you know, I don't know how they feel about it. We haven't talked about it yet.
Let me ask you this. You said there's five, well, four commissioners, there's five commissioners? I, what are they running as? Cause I only see like signs for you.
Well, we do two seats every year. So the seats that are up is my seat and the mayor's seat this year. And then next year it'll be two commission seats. Following years, two commission seats. So they're always changing every year. Or not changing if they get reelected. So and you know, other things I stand for is, is obviously just being a engaged voice of the people. And I just do that through my work, you know, I, I see tons and tons of people every day. That's why we call my store kind of a little mini Flagler Beach United Nations. Everybody, and I get, like today I just had a gentleman who's on our TPO committee in the store. We were talking about traffic. I had multiple cities or not citizens, citizens come by the store just with general concerns over last meeting, things that were said, why, you know, why was this topic brought up? How did you guys come to this conclusion? And things like that. So it's, it's just being a highly engaged voice of the people. And it sounds cliche, but it's really not easy. If you're gonna have a true grip on what people want, it involves talking to a lot of people.
Yeah. How many people are in Flagler Beach?
Five thousand.
Okay.
Well, that's it.
That's it.
That's a good amount of people though. I think like, I read something where they said, you know, obviously when societies in like towns and cities get to too many people, that's when problems start to arise. I don't think five thousand's the number, but I think they said, you know, something around that is like a nice size, you know?
Well, with that being said, let me ask you, like, how many people come as tourists a year estimated to Flagler?
We don't have a very solid number on it. Like it, it would be hard to quantify the actual number of tourists. However, that's changed now, cause I sit on the TDC board, which is Tourism Development Council. There's new software that has come down that tracks everyone through their cell phones. So this company data mines, you know, geolocations and they actually can tell how many tourists you got from and where they came from and then where they went after they were in your city.
That's crazy.
Yeah. So it's interesting, cause what was brought up is, so if you have an app on your phone, right? If that app is free, then you are the actual product.
Yeah.
The app is only there to get your interaction. So all these free apps are tracking all these different data points. And that's all getting sold to companies that data mine and then give us this type of information. But what's nice, from a tourism perspective, we can actually get that number. We can find out where they're coming from, how long they stayed, where they went after this. And all of that is uh, it's, you know, available for really expensive costs, but tourism has that software now. And I haven't got my hands on it yet though. It's brand new.
It's crazy that they have all, well, it makes sense though nowadays, yeah.
And they can do it by park. Like for instance, one of the things county's looking at is how many people are going to each one of the different county parks and where did they go before and after the park? And, cause that dictates your advertising and your message of how you want to control the people going to different areas. And it's all done by tracking you through your phone.
Wow, that makes sense.
Uh, yeah, it's like, somebody's paying for it. Either you or the advertisers really.
Right. And you're the, you're the product. You're basically, Facebook is its own whole data mining thing. So they look at what you're looking at, but they're also with all those 10 million permissions that you just hit, you know, yes to, or you just don't get the app. You know, you're giving them permission to track your movements, you know, your phone usage and all, all these. And so all these other companies that want that info all buy it. But we can use it to track you.
Yeah.
That means we're gonna look at all those strip clubs you go to.
I don't do that. This is just a question for the history of Flagler County. Because I feel like a lot of people were just like, you know, not saying that they exactly want to hear, but why hasn't something like that been a part of our, because you know, a lot of people were like, there's nothing to do around these parts. Not saying that's the only thing to do, but just wondering, you know what I mean?
And it's interesting because it is a piece of Flagler Beach. It's part of our history and how it went down and how it evolved and how our citizens felt about it. But you brought up a good point about the nothing to do. So that actually is an initiative. And so what Flagler Beach has done from a larger tourism point of view is, is focus on eco-tourism. And that's, you know, the tourism of nature. And by design, there's nothing to do. So when people come here and they want all the, the Disneyland-ish stuff or the Daytona style stuff or the St. Augustine style stuff, all that stuff is not part of it because of the big piece of eco-tourism. And what that means, so Flagler Beach has a vision and the environment, nature is a big, big piece of that. So eco-tourism is driven into that.
Okay.
So we, we don't want folks to necessarily do all the, the stuff, the commercialization stuff. We want them to sit on our beach. We want them to walk our trails, ride their bikes.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, and I feel like this is something we would have to cross the bridge as it comes because I know that like recreational cannabis is on the ballot for the state of Florida coming 2024. So I didn't know if you guys might've had a meeting about how this might affect what goes on here and stuff like that. If you guys might be interested in any like festivals or anything like that, like four twenty festivals on the beach. I feel like that would bring a lot of people. I don't know if you guys are interested, not interested in bringing people, but that type of crowd or something like that, or.
He's trying to get me in trouble.
This is a wholesome city, John.
Well, these are things that I'm interested in, you know what I mean? And so.
It's good. So there's a couple pieces of that. So as far as the legalization, so Flagler Beach has a, one, there's one spot in the city that you can put dispensary if you wanted to, and that's in uh, the zoning of highway commercial. And that's across the bridge in the, like the old Winn-Dixie Plaza and stuff like that.
So you can't put it on the island?
Nope. And uh, that's because of the way the zoning is. Now again, if somebody was to wanna try to change that, they could try. Now again, if somebody was to wanna try to change that, they could try to lobby to to get the laws changed.
Well, people say, don't make me cross the bridge.
And uh, back when, back when this was becoming for medical use is when the legislation for that changed. And what it, what Flagler Beach did is they put pharmacies under where can you put a pharmacy? Cause their distribution centers for marijuana are considered um pharmacies, right? So there's one pharmacy, the Flagler Beach Pharmacy, which is right by next to Finn's there. That is the only one that is grandfathered because it's a pharmacy that is not in highway commercial. And they actually changed to a pharmacy when they found out this law was getting passed. A little backstory, I was one of the most outspoken people against that. And the reason why is because to ban dispensaries in everything but highway commercial, which puts it in that one spot only across the bridge is not a, is not a good use of our land. So we have banks all over the island. We have the old Sun Trust, the old PNC, the old Bank of America. Those are where dispensaries usually goes in old banks. The highest and best use of the banks is not being realized right now. Bank of America vacant. The old Sun Trust is now a shark gift store selling, you know, like t-shirts and stuff. The old PNC is is a spa, very nice spa, but is that the highest and best use of those buildings? So I was uh, very outspoken against banning it. We had kind of an old school mentality and I I fought that as a citizen. I wasn't a commissioner then. But from a business aspect, I don't think that it was the best decision. I didn't agree with it. I fought it. I lost. But I was outspoken against it. So to answer your other question about festivals, the city does not do festivals. Those are put on by individuals. And there's nothing stopping individuals from having different festivals as long as they get all the proper permitting and everything. Um, the city could not say no, cause that would be a first amendment violation. As long as what you did was legal.
So if it was legal, um, and, cause well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is like, say booth wise, like you're kinda allowed to like drink on the beach as long as it's a certain type of cup or something like that?
You can drink on the beach. You can't drink on the sidewalks and stuff.
Okay. Now, as for like smoking, like cigarettes, are you allowed to smoke cigarettes on the beach?
No.
Or boardwalk either.
Or boardwalk or parks.
So then that would just wipe that out. Cause like even if it is legal, say like it's legal to smoke cigarettes, you're still not allowed to like smoke on the beach.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
I guess that's.
But as far as like having a festival, what you talked about, you can do that. The city can't tell you no, as long as you're not doing anything illegal. Because that's a first amendment protected thing.
Okay. Yeah, the right to come together and stuff like that.
And you can, you can have festivals, you know, celebrating marijuana. You can have festivals celebrating anything. Um, even if it's objectionable, because legally they can't stop you from having it. Cause that's your first amendment, right?
Awesome.
Do you have to like, you just file the permit? You have to pay to have an event at Veterans Park?
Any, any city properties, you gotta have a.
But it's not like you have to lease the park, you just file for the permit?
Yep, you file for the permit. Depending on what your event is and what you're getting, you know, what you're doing, it would require different departments of the city to weigh on it. Like if you have alcohol, you gotta get police and fire involved, our safety team. Then they have to sign off on it. So every style event has different approvals that it follows.
Okay. Um, I know before we get out of here, you said you wanted little Dave to ask you a question.
Yeah.
So um, take Dave's seat over there.
All right, we got a guest speaker.
Yeah, this is a big moment, man. And we really appreciate this, you know, he he pushed for, he wanted to speak to the youth and really see what kind of problems or what they would ask the city commissioner. So um, we have sixteen year old young David.
Little Dave.
Little Dave.
Little Dave. That's Big Dave.
DPN three.
So um, yeah. So what what's going on, man? Do you have any questions for the city commissioner here?
Yeah. So the one question I had uh, off camera was while we were living back at Fourteenth Street, you know, and you know, I know how you spoke about, there was those walkovers at every single uh, street. And I wanted to know like why they were closed so long. Cause I was there for like a year and they weren't closed the whole time. They were just closed a little bit, but I did notice when they got back opened and I just wanted to know, you know?
That's a question that a lot of people have asked. So it's a really good question. So there's, when the storms happen, there is different layers of, we'll call it destruction. So each walkover got every one of them had a different amount of damage. Some got washed away completely. Some of them had minor damage. So what the city did is the city took a a role of every single walkover. And I don't know if a lot of people know this, but the city has fifty two walkovers. A lot of walkovers.
So that's like twenty six and twenty six, north and south or something?
So we have fifty two and we have a maintenance crew of three.
Okay.
So right there, numbers don't work. If everything, if everything gets damaged at once, that's gonna take a while.
Yeah.
So the city had to go through and study the walkovers, figure out what damage happened to every single walkover. That took time.
Yeah.
Then you had to prioritize based off damage. So immediately after the, all the research was done, everything, then they go to the quick fixes. While they're having to close the other ones, just closing them takes time. Then depending on the severity of damage of the walkovers and the amount of times the walkovers got damaged, you have to determine can you replace it with the same design or do you have to change the design?
Beats changing.
So you get into that. So then you can fix the walkovers that have severe damage, but then you have to get permitting and you have to follow the governmental bid process, which takes a little while. So you have to, and then you got also that, all that has to get filed with insurance. Once all that's done, then you're now fixing your middle, we'll call it the middle of the road damage walkovers. The ones that are too big for our maintenance staff to fix. You have to bid out, get a permit and actually follow the insurance process of getting that walkover fixed. And then the ones that took the absolute longest are the ones that had to get a redesign. When you get a redesign done, you have to go through the DEP permitting process. Anything that touches water goes through super high levels of scrutiny, especially if it's public. If it's private, that system's a little bit faster. It's usually smaller in scale. It's not as invasive. And uh, you know, the, the area of the dune that is potentially jeopardized or disturbed by that is a lot smaller. When you're at a public walkover, it's exponential. So then you follow the redesign process. Then you have to get DEP approval line. And then you're back to now bidding it out. You have to rebid it out. Then you have to work all that out with your insurance. Figure out where the money's coming from, pay the difference in following. And all of that takes a long time. And and citizens, unfortunately, they don't wanna hear that. However, once the storm happens, the city literally goes into following those steps. But when you do that, times fifty two walkovers, it takes a long time.
Whatever you're doing.
Even if you did one a week, by the time you get done, they're happening again.
Well, that's the thing is the, even the crews that we hire to fix the severely damaged ones are going to work on one or two walkovers at a time, but it it could take them a week, two weeks. And it's, and then if you get into having to drive pilings into the ground, you're, you're taking, you know, three to four weeks. So when you have one crew doing a three to four week walkover, times all those damaged walkovers, the, the time adds up and and people start losing their patience. But I gotta put our viewers on notice. Yeah, we gotta talk about this. We talked about this a little bit before. Our insurance, after all of these years of damage, has said no more. The walkovers are now no longer insurable. So what's going to end up happening is as a city, we're going to have to decide, do we wanna spend astronomical amounts of money to repair walkovers that in certain, you know, there are certain streets that are higher risk than others. Is it practical to have walkovers at every single block? And that's something the city and the citizens are gonna have to weigh in on. Now, we're gonna kinda hold fast until the beach project's done, the renourishment, because the sand is gonna change things. And it's gonna be a game changer. But long term, citizens are going to have to decide, do we pay astronomical amounts of money to fix our walkovers every single year? Or do we cut down the amount of walkovers? Because is it really practical to have a walkover every single block? And is it practical to have fifty two walkovers?
I never really thought about that, cause that is kind of a part of Flagler Beach. Like when I am here or when they were at Fourteenth Street, I know I can go to the end of the street and just walk over to the beach.
This is that nostalgia thing, like Fourth of July. So times are changing. What do we do? Like can we hold on to the beauty of having a walkover at every single block? And expect the city of five thousand to repair fifty two walkovers every single storm season? And the amount of money.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Even half the amount, a third of the amount would still keep it Flagler Beachy, but a lot less.
People can walk one or two blocks over.
One or even three or four blocks. It's honestly not that much.
The people that you say that to though, they don't wanna be the ones to have the walk, walk or two over. So if we as commissioners say, say, and I'm just throwing out a number, Seventeenth Street South. If we say this is a very volatile, high risk walkover, just based on elevation and design, it's not practical to replace. Sixteen, seventeenth blocks are going to lose their minds. And then, then you're gonna have a panic with the rest of the city of going, which of which other walkovers are gonna get taken out? It's, it's a, it's a touchy subject. And this is, you know, just like the Fourth of July discussion, there's two sides to it. We have the nostalgia and we have the emotion of this is what we've always done and we want it to stay the same forever. And then we have the practicality of, can it?
Right.
Is it really worth it?
Right.
It's a tough one.
Is that realistic?
Yeah. We're gonna learn a lot when we get sand on the ground after the renourishment project. But I, I kinda putting this out to the viewers to really understand long term, we really gotta start asking ourselves these questions because you're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars every single year.
Yeah.
And let's be real, city five thousand can't afford that.
That's true. You know, just number wise, that's really expensive.
Off camera guy, it looks like you have a question.
Yeah. Well, you know, this actually reminds me of something like, I remember like a few months back, like I, I read something about Palm Coast was like kinda complaining that you guys like trying to hit them up for like money for like parking lots or something like that. Now, here's this thing, you just said there's five thousand people in Flagway Beach. But everybody in the county comes to the beach. So I mean, the whole county is relying on five thousand people to pay, follow that. So like, does Palm Coast like give any money? Were they like, no? Like, I never like really followed up on whatever happened with that. That was like a year ago, right?
So there, I started the joint municipality meetings. Um, so Flagler Beach would have a seat at the table to discuss issues that are concerns to us with our neighbors, with county, Beverly, you know, everybody in Palm Coast. And one of the main issues was geographically, our land is finite. Um, whereas the population, and I'll, I'll circle back to your question here in a second, but give you a little bit of background. So our land is finite. Palm Coast is growing exponentially. All the people that live in the coast wanna come to the beach. But we only have so much room and we have only so many parking spaces. There is not a desire in our population to turn Flagler Beach into Palm Coast Beach Parking Lot. There's no desire for that. Our taxpayers won't do it. It, it degrades quality of life for our taxpayers. And, you know, they, there's no pluses to it. The, because once you reach a saturation point of people where your businesses are thriving, you don't eat anymore. So at that point, anybody else that continues to come in is now a burden. And so there's no desire to continue to pile people in by adding lots and adding parking garages and doing all those things. But to come full circle to what you were talking about, there, when we started that meeting, there was a rumor that we were asking the other municipalities for money and we were not. What we wanted to do is sit down with them. They assumed that because traditionally that's what we've done. And it really wasn't, that wasn't the purpose of it. The purpose was to say, here's our issues that we see coming long term. And we wanna share them with you because these are your people too. Your people wanna come to us. But there's gonna come a point where they're not going to even fit here. It's not practical. And we're not going to build an infrastructure to, to even give them the space because if we do that, then we're taking away from ourselves. And we're the ones paying for it. Why would we pay for something to hurt ourselves? It doesn't make sense. But so they thought that. We never asked anybody for money. However, it would be wise if our partner municipalities recognize that and help with that cost. So one of the issues of the multi municipality meeting that I brought up is y'all have beaches all up and down the, the coast. You have Varn, you have Sixteenth Street, you have Malacamper, you have Bay. All these places and none of your citizens use these parks. Uh, one of the county commissioners called them the Six Edden Beaches. And so what we did is we said, you should improve capacities and accommodations at those parks. If you're not gonna give us money to fix our infrastructure, which we, I mean, really, let's be fair, it's ours, right? Well, we can't really say your people use it, so you should pay because any city could say it. However, we can say you have other places for all of these future people to go. You need to beef them up.
Yeah. And I remember like then some woman um, from Palm Coast, I don't remember which one from the council or whatever over there was like, we should turn Jungle Hut into Palm Coast Beach. And then the other people were like, oh, well, we already have a beach. We're not gonna pay for that. Just like, but they're still just gonna pawn it off on Flagler though, like to, to absorb all the costs and still not wanna.
And that's the, the issue that we're battling is that the mentality of it's a complacency thing. So folks that don't like, we'll, we'll just use Palm Coast for example. I'm gonna make a generalization. So people that are listening from Palm Coast don't, don't hate, cause but there's a mentality of, we got beaches. It's Flagler. We just go to Flagler. That's our beach. But what nobody's thinking of, what, what's gonna happen when Flagler Beach is full? Which is right around the corner. And because Flagler Beach is not going to increase space. Because an increase of space will take away from our own quality of life. And we're very protective of our own taxpayers, cause if Palm Coast is not paying, then why are we going to increase capacity for something that doesn't pay? If our businesses are already busy, we don't need more business. There comes a point where you just say enough's enough, because that's that whole growing thing where you can possibly degrade your own quality of life in the city. And Palm Coast, they, they were bouncing around an idea of making the beach part of one of the beaches to be Palm Coast. So the citizens of Palm Coast would have a beach to go to that was theirs. And, you know, they're still welcome here, but they, you know, eventually people are only gonna be welcome here as long as we have space. We're a very small city, as you know, surrounded by a huge county. And uh, you know, the county was uh, something like four hundred some odd square miles. And, you know, city Flagler Beach is seven miles long and a couple hundred feet wide in some spots. So we're, we're small. But that's the thing is what are we going to do when all of the people that, you know, we have a t-shirt here, right? Says coast on it. Y'all don't have a coast. That's the problem. Yeah. Oh, we could say, t-shirt colored no. I want, but here's the thing is, is, you know, the, the conversation he's had is what do the people that moved here to get to the beach? Where are they gonna go when Flagler Beach is full? Now is the whole purpose of the joint multi municipality meetings.
That kind of.
Y'all don't have a coast.
That kind of brings, that's a crazy point. That is a crazy point I didn't even think about. Um, but is it true that you guys are gonna start charging to park on the beach?
Well, we're not gonna let you park on the beach at all.
Wait, what?
You can't park on the beach. You gotta park in a parking spot.
I mean, like those parking spots that are in the sand and stuff like that.
Okay, so as of right now, there's nothing in place to do that. Now, what I have been saying very clearly to our partner municipalities is it is inevitable that that will eventually happen. I know, look at you. And that's, here's the problem.
That's why I left Fort Lauderdale.
That, that is the importance of why we needed to have these joint municipality meetings is because. That, that is the importance of why we needed to have these joint municipality meetings is because here's the, here's the issue. To fix two parking spots in our city, just to fix two of them and get them up to snuff, do code landscapes, resurface over three hundred thousand dollars. Well, here's the thing, who's paying for it? Who's paying for it?
Not Palm Coast.
Who's paying for that? Who's paying for it is the people that live here that don't use those parking spots. Because we live here. How do you think those people feel about that? Will you want us to pay how much? So we can have people come here to our beaches that, like, how do we gain from this? There is none. So there is a balance. And again, this is the whole quality of life thing. So there's gotta be a way to pay for the infrastructure of the parking areas. Have you parked on uh, A one A here recently? You notice that there's like, you, once you pull off the asphalt, there's like a ten foot drop that your car gets stuck on. Well, those parking spaces are maintained by D O T, but D O T is kind of pushing back on us going, look, um, we maintain the road. If you want to have a parking area, that's on you. And they haven't officially said that, but you see how well they take care of it. So if we're going to maintain a quality city that benefits our citizens, we have to maintain those areas. That's hundreds of thousands of dollars. Who's gonna pay for it? The people that can walk to the beach are the ones paying for you to park your car at the beach. And so that can only go on for so long. And that's where paid parking comes in. And I know nobody likes that. And people are like, well, we're not gonna pay the good beach. Yeah, you are, because there's nowhere else to get there. And no matter, and, and it's only a matter of like, we, we're not doing it because we're greedy and we're making tons of money, but somebody has to pay for those parking spots.
Do you as now take off like the commissioner jacket and put on your business seven eleven owner jacket? Are you worried that it might like slow down sales if people Palm Coast not coming? Or you're like, people are gonna come.
People are gonna come.
They're gonna, they're gonna
Where else they gonna go? Says coast. I mean, unless it's gonna, you're gonna change it to Palm. But you know, the, the thing is, is they're gonna come. Like i- if you, let's say we were to institute paid parking. Then you're going to have a shift of people might not come to the paid Flagler Beach Parking. They'll go to those hidden beaches that we really need them to go to anyways, right? So eventually, because here's the reality of it, fast forward ten years, fifteen years, okay? There's no more room left. Palm Coast is now built, you know, tons of houses. Um, just in the next twenty years, Palm Coast is planning, Palm Coast in itself. You're, y'all are already over a hundred thousand people strong. You're gonna be adding another thirty two thousand people on top of your hundred thousand, right?
We're coming to the beach.
Right, you coming to the beach. But the beach doesn't have the space. So now
There's more people coming than there is in Fire Beach.
So here's, here's the problem though. But here's, here you gotta check this out though. So Flagler Beach is long, we're going long term, way out, right? We're gonna become so inundated with people as a county. That the only people we're going to want in Flagler Beach is citizens or people spending money. And if you're here with a cooler and you want to try to freebie this and freebie that and you're just gonna show up and we don't want you here. And, and the, in, and I'm not saying that to be mean, I'm saying that from a practical aspect. Can't have a car park on A one A in front of Golden Line, sitting there all day and they brought their cooler, they don't spend a single dime. They, they run across the street, use Golden Line's bathroom, then they go back out. And then they leave after being there an entire day and take up that whole spot. And then, and what, what do we gain from that? In, in this, you know, and I don't want to stir this up, because you're gonna get some people be like, oh my God, this is, I'm talking fifteen years in the future.
And this is real life.
Yeah. And these are those hard conversations that gotta be had. We can sit here and stick our heads in the sand and be like, look, it's not a thing. It's not a thing. It is a thing. And so the other beaches that are further north of here can stay free. They can be county funded. But Flagler Beach is more or less all of A one A is a business sector, right? I mean, you see all commercial properties. There's some residential, but it's mostly all commercial. So the issue is if there is somebody coming here who's not a tourist and they're not a citizen and they're not here to spend money or day trip, like we want Palm Coast to come here and support our businesses. That's because y'all are coming here and you're supporting us. You're either spending money in some way or you're doing something that's productive. But if you just come in here at a day trip, leave your trash on the beach, roll out after taking up a parking spot all day, that's where the whole concept of paid parking comes in.
At least you're contributing something.
Right. And you're going to pay to maintain at least the infrastructure of what you use to park there. So now, and essentially, you're kind of paying your way.
Makes sense.
Or at least starting to. We've gone to the county, we've gone to Palm Coast, we said, hey, look, y'all are using us as your playground. We could use some financial help. And they're like, no. It's not our job to fund your city. And that's fair. I mean, you know, let's be real, it's fair, right?
I mean, it's like you guys chose to be here. I mean, I mean, speaking, speaking as the mayor of Palm Coast, it's like we're allowed to come over here.
You are, and you're welcome.
You know what I mean? Like I'm here right now. I'm here right now. You guys are gonna have to deal with me, but I feel you contribute something. I got you. I can do that. But four dollars an hour is like
It's tough.
Four dollars?
That's what it is in Fort Lauderdale, bro. Four dollars an hour.
But understand that the conversation I'm having is not about now. This is about later. This is about when y'all add another thirty thousand people. And ev- and everything keeps getting tighter and tighter and tighter and tighter. And, and so it's not a matter of saying Palm Coast isn't welcome, because everybody's welcome. It's a matter of saying, we only have so much space. So if you have day trippers that only want to just roll to the beach with a tent, cooler, totally self-support, and all you want is to be able to just have a bathroom and a parking spot, then what we're going to say is Flagler Beach is say, use the county beaches for that. Because anywhere in this city that you park, you're potentially taking away from a business that, that needs that spot to turn over. You know, in the time one car is in a parking spot for an entire day of just hanging out at the beach with their cooler and not spending a single dime, that spot could have turned over, what, ten, fifteen times easy? And that's with clientele for, to support our, our own infrastructure and our own beaches and all that. So we gotta be smart about what we're doing. And, and here's the thing. There's a lot of emotion around this stuff and people are gonna be like, man, I can't believe they're saying stuff like that. But, but that's this is, this is business, it's reality, and it's just looking at things from a mathematical perspective. You can't have, when the county population grows, you can't have unproductive use of a tiny little space. It's gotta be used productive. Cause anything outside of that, you're gonna ruin the quality of life.
That makes sense. Definitely.
And you have to change your T-shirt to just say Palm. And we want Palm Coast people here. We want y'all to support our businesses. We want y'all, we welcome you. We want you to buy our merch that says, you know, Flagler Beach is better. We want, we want all of that.
That's an awesome shirt.
We, we want that, but it, there will come a point that will, someone will have to be smart and say, we can't afford to just have day trippers inundating a commercial sector of the beach. You know, for just day tripping.
That makes sense.
It's painful though to hear.
Nah, it is. It is painful, but it makes sense. And I want you guys to do better, you know?
And that's just a lot, you know, I've been in uh, you know, management and business for my whole career. And one of the things that I'm in charge of as a commissioner is taking that practical experience and asking these type of questions and saying, what are we gonna do in fifteen years? And how do we, cause I've seen in the chat rooms, you see it all the time. Flagler Beach needs a parking garage. Flagler Beach needs to add a bunch of lots. Well, if, let's say we did that, right? Let's say we added two or three parking garages, we added ten, fifteen lots all over the city, right? Let's say we did that. And we don't even know who's gonna pay for that, because right now y'all want us to pay for that, right? We don't get anything out of it, because our people have parking spots. They're called driveways. Right? So, but let's say we did add that. What would our city look like with all those cars parked here? What's gonna be the quality of life of our citizens?
Look like a mini Daytona.
It'd be worse. You're talking like Saint Augustine during Night of Lights. It's just crazy.
Yeah, you're right.
And so in our, in our taxpayers, they, they don't want that. They're not, they're, they're gonna be like, what are y'all doing? Like, we can't be a big parking lot for a beach.
That makes sense. And you know, I definitely think this is something for us to take into consideration as Palm Coast people.
And it's, it's just a give and take. We gotta make, I want to take care of our neighbors. You know, and I don't want, that's why I don't want anybody hearing that to think that, that I don't. But we as, and that's the whole purpose of the multi municipality meetings, is to sit down and say, we're not gonna make this decision without talking to you first. We, we gotta as partners, you know, Palm Coast, Flagler Beach, County, Beverly, we all collectively have to decide, how are we going to address this future problem we know we're gonna have? And that was the whole point of the joint multi municipality meetings, is to, to have those conversations.
That's awesome. Before we do get out of here, is there a process of if I wanted to sell some coast shirts like in the seven eleven? Is that allowed?
I can sell anything I want.
I didn't know. I didn't know if it was like a, you know, what do you call those things? Franchise?
It is a franchise, but, but I have the ability to bring in merchandise as I see fit. Assuming that like you're, you gotta understand though, you're wanting Flagler Beach people to buy Palm Coast T-shirts.
Going back to that again, man. We're all one, man. We're all one. We gotta come together.
That's true, but I don't know if they're gonna be big sellers. We could try it.
That's funny.
See
We'll not tell them about the Palm Park.
I can tell you, I can tell you this, like the don't make me cross the bridge T-shirts, they sell a lot.
That's funny.
And they sell a lot because there's a particular like mindset mentality of island side versus the mainland side. And I don't know if it would get reciprocated, is they're like, yeah, man, I should get that mainland T-shirt there.
That's funny. So almost, I should probably sell it to seven eleven across the bridge is what you're saying.
Right? They, that would probably be good if they decide to bring it in. I, I would try to sell anything though.
That's awesome. Well, Mr. Cooley, we really appreciate you coming in today. You definitely gave us a lot of knowledge, a lot of information about the city of Flagler Beach that I did not know.
Yeah, we got deep on some stuff.
We did, we did. And um, I definitely appreciate you uh, even entertaining some of my lighter questions. But um, all of them are good questions. All of them have to do with Flagler County. And you know, I hope as we get closer to the time, you know, maybe we have some more questions, we could bring you back in.
Right. I was thinking, based on the amount of material that we covered, it probably would warrant a part two or three. There's just a lot of pieces to the, the puzzle that I think that it would help the public understand.
Definitely. You know, we're gonna get some insight that we get from this discussion that we're then gonna bring to the next one of stuff. But um, Dave, do you have anything else? I think, I think we covered a lot and you know, we did really good. And I definitely appreciate how you've been handling Flagler Beach and stuff. Cause I'm not saying before, it wasn't good, but just being here, it was kind of like stagnant, stagnant, that kind of like, you know, and then I've seen just, not just like growth, because it isn't always about the growth, but just the community coming together, you know, and I feel like everybody's really working well together and stuff like that. So we really
We have a pretty good dynamic going on with the, the elected body and, and our vision. And it's a good balance too. We still have folks that are on the body that want to keep things exactly status quo, not change anything and but, and then we also have another dynamic of people recognizing that change is inevitable and it's coming whether we want to adjust to it or not. And it's better to really take an analytical look at what's coming and get ahead of it, so we can hold on to what makes us special. That's the whole point of it. When Pete, when you talk about adjusting to new concepts, a lot of that is a defensive measure to hold on to what made your city what you wanted it to be. You, because if you take the strict, I'm not, it's not gonna do nothing, we're gonna stay this way forever, you won't stay that way forever. So you gotta, you gotta adjust. Stay the
Be realistic about what's going on. That's awesome. Well, everybody, definitely uh, vote for Eric Cooley, for city commissioner. And you know, just check out this whole podcast. We really appreciate you. We appreciate our sponsors. Please, everybody, go follow Billy Dzeus and also Terrence Roberson. And share this podcast, like, subscribe to Flagler Weekly. And everybody, we appreciate you guys tuning in. And have a great night.